Mary Jalali Nelson, Acre Prince Tau, Tolbert. Commissioner Missouri is absent, six present. There are two items for your consideration on the consent agenda.
A motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner Naker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Seven in favor and one opposed, the consent agenda is adopted. Item number six is a discussion item for the resolution approving the final 2020 HRA budget and certifying the final HRA property tax levy payable in 2020.
Director Gil.
Good afternoon, Chair Tolbert, Commissioners. This is certification of the final 2020 HRA budget and tax levy payable in 2020. The HRA property tax levy provides revenue to the HRA to support HRA investments in affordable housing and in business and job growth. HRA programs include the Housing Trust Fund, business loan programs, PED staffing, and maintenance of HRA properties. The final 2020 HRA tax levy to be certified to Ramsey County is $4,547,359. Staff recommends approval.
Great. Any questions? Commissioner Tau?
Thank you, Commissioner Tolbert. I'd like to make a friendly amendment to the budget. I'd like to invite Holly to come up here to do a staff report.
Do you have a copy of the amendment?
I'm sorry, yep.
Okay.
Chair Tolbert, councilmembers, the attachment to Resolution 19-2105 lists a series of board recommended changes to the budget. Under the board recommended changes, this is a result of the Seven Corners Gateway Sale Proceeds that were not originally in the proposed budget in August, and Council Member Tau is proposing that $200,000 be carved out of the recommended building maintenance line number 37, the sale proceeds, and be redirected to domestic and gun violence prevention contracts within with community partners. So this would retain an additional $400,000 in that building maintenance and...
Could you tell us what would be cut?
Um, Councilmember or Chair Tolbert, Commissioners, I would look to Councilmember Tau for that recommendation.
Commissioner Tau.
Thank you. Let me just put this over there so that we can see it. This is a map of the homicide 29. I think that right now we're at 30. This is the homicide in the city of St. Paul. If you look at this map, the concentration of homicide are typically in the low-income or impoverished community in St. Paul, Frog Town, some of you, North End, and on the East Side. And so, you know, though I appreciate what the supplemental budget would be doing, over our year-long conversation about anti-gun violence in the city of St. Paul and the Community First Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Mitra, myself, co-chair with Councilmember Bren Moynihan, we have really great discussion there about how to do prevention intervention, and we have a lot of interest from the community. And so, what I've seen is that, how should I put this? We have, we are, we have provided funding for two organizations, the Ambassador Program and what Pastor Givens are doing, and I think that's great. But there are other organizations in the community that has been doing this work as well, and they are deserving and helping us to create a safer St. Paul. I just want to tell a story here that this came out September 19, 2019, and it read, "First, gunshots rang out on a St. Paul street, three shots, then five more. Then an eight-year-old girl screamed, 'They shot my dad! They shot my dad!' The neighbors heard. Ravel Carter, 41, of Roseville, was fatally shot on Wednesday night after he left Bible study in the Summit University neighborhood. Ravel Carter, the police said that he was just departed at St. Albans Church of God and Christ at Aurora Avenue in St. Albans Street with a group of people, including his father, his daughter, and when someone opened fire." So, these are not things that we see in a movie, these are real reality that we live in, in that we need to have, we need to support organizations that are doing this sort of work in the community. We have Mentor Young Adults, we have the God Squad, we have the African-American Leadership Council, the Black Minister Alliance, the NAACP, New Lens. These are organizations that are deeply connected to the community as well. And so, this one-time money will help them and provide catalysts for them to continue to do this work as we continue to solidify the work of the Community Safety First Committee so that we can find long-term support. And this funding also bring them to the table so that everybody is, we're building solidarity and we're working toward creating a safer St. Paul. So this is one other argument that I think that we should be doing the right thing and helping the folks in the community that's already doing this work. Another concern that has brought up to my attention is the work of doing anti-domestic violence in the Hmong American community, where traditionally the Hmong community has thought to be a society of a collective, as a group, before the individual. And so, when you have domestic situation at home, the women, they are silent, they don't talk about it until tragedy occurred in our community. So, the 18th Council, it's an organization that has the trust of the community that they work with all clans, over 100,000 members of the Hmong community, and this is the kind of, they're not asking for handout, none of these organizations I mentioned are asking for handout, they're just asking, looking for opportunity to continue to deepen their work. And I just want to tell a story here. This was in the Pioneer Press on September 9. "The discovery of two bodies Saturday by police in a new Brighton apartment complex has been ruled murder-suicide by Ramsey County Medical Examiner. Police were called to the Gannon Fall at Silver Lake Apartment, 7:30 a.m., after a witness called police from a nearby gas station reporting seeing a man with a gun and hearing gunshot. Responding officer found Mai Niya Yang, 34, the couple's, in the couple's apartment, dead from apparent gunshot wound to the head. While they're executing a search warrant to unattached garage on the property, investigator found her husband, Jivang, 51, dead of apparent self-inflicted gunshot." What the story doesn't talk about are the kids and the children and the family that are connected to this tragic incident. And so, when kids are without their parents through the domestic violence like this, the county and the city has to take up the responsibility of providing resource and care for these kids. And so, at the end of the day, it still come back to us. So, supporting them in culturally relevant anti-domestic violence work is important, and working to support Hmong women so that they can have the courage to come out and that there are places for them to go and that they can get help, because domestic violence, not just physical, emotional, and economical. And so, that is why I think that it's important for us of the council to support this friendly amendment of one-time money to support these organizations. This, had I known that we had, had I known that we would get $5 million from the sale of the Seven Corner parking lot, I would have advocated for this a long time ago, but I didn't, because I didn't want to put any burden on the taxpayer to add any more levy. But because we did have a sale of the tax, I'm sorry, of the parking lot, and this additional money, I think it is a worthy cause for us to support this, and that is why I'm moving this amendment forward.
Commissioner Tau, what are you proposing to be cut?
I'm sorry?
What, my original question, what are you proposing to cut?
What am I proposing to cut? So, there is a, what the general sense is that we have a $1.8 million, $600,000 for the next three years to do building maintenance. I'd be more than happy to find money to help that as we go forward, but I think that we should be careful about how we would put money a lot of somewhere as a bulk, and then we may never use those money. Let me give you an example of, we passed a budget last year to put money into the mental health, and that money was not used. We passed budget to hire staff for PED, and they were never used. And so, these are the things that I think we also have to be conscious about, and so, I'll do my part in finding that $200,000 next year to help balance a $600,000 annual for facility maintenance.
And I appreciate that. What I'm asking is, you've brought an amendment forward to cut $200,000 proposed out of this budget. I'm asking what parts of it are you proposing to cut?
Well, so, right here on item number 37, transfer the parking fund to capital improvement budget for building and maintenance over one of three years, right? So, originally, the budget, the proposal was $600,000 for the next three years, so that is equal to $1.8 million. What I'm asking for is on item number 38, to transfer the general fund for domestic and gun violence prevention contract, $200,000, sir.
Okay. So, Director Gil, what would that, the funding that Commissioner Tau proposes to cut, what is that going to?
Chair Tolbert and Commissioner Tau, the, I think that what we're looking at here is the, is the council commission proposed funds for building maintenance, correct? The $600,000 proposed, which I would, the Office of Financial Services is considerably more familiar with the uses for that than I am, so I thought, I think Susan Earl...
Yeah, Ms. Earl, if you want to shed some light on...
Commissioner Susan Earl, Office of Financial Services. Director Gil is correct, so that's funding that is being proposed to set $600,000 aside each year for the next three years for building maintenance. These are proposals that have come through our capital maintenance process. So these are things like roofs, HVAC, other building maintenance projects that have been requested by departments, so things that wouldn't come before a CIB committee and a CIB, or wouldn't raise the level of a full CIB project, but fall under the capital maintenance bucket.
So, it's funding for the things in our parks and our libraries and fire stations?
Chair Tolbert, yes. It's for all the buildings in St. Paul, so heavily funded, the parks' capital maintenance is heavily funded through this, as well as libraries, fire stations, police buildings.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Tau, just one more question. Is your proposal already have the money, the $200,000, do you have that split up already to be directed to specific organizations, or do you have a competitive process so other nonprofits could bid on it and have a data-driven results?
Yes, sir. The proposal, the idea is that the Community First Committee, say, Community First Safety Committee would help work with the organization to create the process. The process is not a new process, it's a, we already have existing process that we do with the COP fund, and so, this would be a, bringing the community together, they would help us identify through RFP process which organization would get this one-time funding to continue to multiply their work. And I just want to say that, though I appreciate the park departments and our facility as a municipal that we do need to do those upkeep, what we're talking about here, so I don't want to minimize that work and that needs to be done to keep our facility the best in the Twin City, but what we're talking about here is trading lives. We're talking about empowering members of the community that has been doing this work for a long time to continue to do their work and to multiply their effort at a time where we need an immediate stop to the gun violence in the city of St. Paul. And so, we're trading lives with HVAC. And I think that most sensible people would look at this and value that even though we need to do this maintenance work, $200,000, if we could save a young person's life, it's priceless. And so, and that is why I'm asking this, the HRA board to support this friendly amendment.
Commissioner Bren Moynihan?
I would just say generally, I appreciate your spelling out your plan and what you're thinking of here. I definitely support your vision and the organizations and the work that they do. I'm not very supportive of using one-time money from the city's parking fund to fund ongoing programmatic use for the, for these organizations. And I have encouraged you in conversations before this meeting to consider using the Community Organization Partnership Program, or COP, that you just referred to, that currently exists with $115,000 in it. In the past, each ward was allocated a portion of the COP, CLPP, funds, and we can no longer use the funds in that manner going forward, so there are $115,000 already in the program with the process set up in the manner which you described that would be available to be used for the programs that you described. And I think that would be a more appropriate fit than one-time funding from the parking fund.
Commissioner Prince?
I have an issue with one-time money from the parking fund being used for any number of things on this list. This would not, this, I do not have a problem with it, with this, because much of what the mayor proposed as part of his supplemental violence prevention program is being funded with one-time money through the, through the parking fund. Secondly, I feel that last year at this time, when we were making changes to the budget, we had an outpouring of the community here under the umbrella of Roots and Restore saying to us, "We need a community cabinet. We are the people who are in the best position to be designing programs to do self-policing, to do violence prevention on the ground, violence intervention in our communities." We made a commitment at that time that we would form that community cabinet. The fact that it isn't formed yet, I feel, is, as I've said earlier, it's the council dragging its feet, and I feel now that, given the spike in gun violence that we have seen and the seriousness of the problem, I fully expected that the mayor's supplemental budget was going to come in with a community piece in it, that it would recognize the ongoing efforts of organizations working throughout our communities to do this work. And I was frankly shocked and offended by that. So, I fully support Councilmember Tau's amendment to this list. You know, this $5 million windfall that we discovered, that the administration discovered at the 11th hour, is this body's money. This is not the administration's money. This is the HRA's money that we have the power to spend on priorities as we see fit. So, I just want to be clear that when we are deciding that, "Oh, it's fine to spend one-time money on a mental health professional that's going to be part of a $250,000 fire community health worker program that even the fire department couldn't adequately explain to us with a consultant sitting at the table," I feel like we have much more, I have much more faith and confidence in our community organizations to take and compete for this money and be doing work on the ground that they're already doing without it. Just for an example, the God Squad, there was a meeting in September at the height of the gun violence that was, that was put together by the Black Ministerial Alliance and the St. Paul NAACP at Arlington Hills Lutheran Church in my ward. Darrell Spence was there from the God Squad, and the God Squad was on the ground doing the work, working with these young people and getting the job done. So, to in any way imply that it's inappropriate to support them with one-time money out of the parking fund when we're taking a giant leap to support a mental health worker for a program that doesn't even exist, exist yet, that would be one of my ideas. If you don't want to take it out of building maintenance, let's use the 130 for the mental health worker, which then we could combine with the ongoing COP money and have a real program. But this is the HRA's money, we should be directing and spending our money, we should have a public process of the HRA that says how we want to spend this money and not be tools of somebody else getting their hands on our money at the 11th hour and telling us how we're going to spend it.
Commissioner Nelson?
You know, I want to just respond to a couple of things that you said, Councilmember Prince, respectfully. The People's Cabinet, Community Cabinet idea is in the proposal we get to vote on today. And so, to say that it's not happening or that work hasn't been happening toward it erases the work that my office has done, that lots of community partners have done, and we're actually on the cusp of a victory to achieving that. And the reason I fought so hard for that idea is because I actually think we need to develop community processes for fair criteria, a clear sense of outcomes and vision, values alignment, and community review for granting ideas like this. I mean, I've been talking for a long time about wanting a process like that for something like recast, which is what Minneapolis has for healing programs, and something like that for violence prevention organizations in another way. So, I'm also supportive of the concept, but I don't think that having a process like COP is actually strong enough to make sure that this money doesn't get either politicized or misspent, and I, and I guess I just, I have concerns about that, I understand some people do, some people don't, but I'm just telling you where I'm at with it. And the difference I would make between parking fund money for other parts of the supplemental and parking fund money for what this is, which is something I've told you already before too, but just to bring it to the table, the things that we're using in the supplemental to fund with parking fund money have on-ramp afterward. The returning home pilot would have philanthropic support coming online and other things coming after it. The other resources that we're scaling up are either in a more sustainable funding source or have a vision for being able to continue beyond, and I'm afraid of a situation where we kind of walk community organizations up to a cliff and then we don't have anything. So, my preference is to keep working toward this idea in a future budget cycle. I just wanted to lay out my thinking for why and respond to some of the things that you said, but I respect in here where everyone's coming from. I think this is obviously an incredibly emotional conversation and thing to be working on, so that's all I have to say.
Commissioner Tau?
Thank you. I just thank you for the comment, and I just want to go back to Councilmember Bren Moynihan's point about the one-time money. You know, I think that when we look at the history, the Ambassador Program started out as a one-time, $100,000, and I was on the council at that time, and we, we passed that to support them, and then from there, we got the result that we, we thought that it would be beneficial to the city, and then we passed a resolution to incorporate that as part of the city's funding ongoing. And so, I think that the good work of the Ambassador Program was also because of one-time funding that the city supported it. And this is not, today, what we're talking about here is nothing different. It's about providing these organizations opportunities so they could be at the table, and we talk about setting organizations for fail. Right now, these organizations that I mentioned, they're not, they don't have any, they're not even at the table, they're not even getting anything. And so, this would be an opportunity to support them so that they can continue to do their work. And if they're doing their work now and if they're not failing, imagine if we support them a little bit more, they would be able to do more. And I understand that the ongoing money, so I think a better strategy is that we bring them to the table in 2020 and help them craft a process and a solidarity, create solidarity, and that the COP money, the $110,000, that's actually part of our going, that could be part of our going funding to support these sort of work in the community, and that we can leverage that ongoing $110,000 with Ramsey County, with the state, with other philanthrous organization to maximize our work in the community. I think one homicide is too many homicide in the city of St. Paul. We should be doing everything we can to bring peace and peace of mind into the community so that people will want to live, want to work in St. Paul, want to spend their money in St. Paul, so that we can bring, diversify our tax revenue so that we can, instead of taxing the property tax owner, the property owners and the business owner, that we're doing everything we can to, to bring folks into this community and to stabilize our tax base right now.
One quick question for you, and then Commissioner Versari and Commissioner Naker. So, and maybe I missed something. Have you already picked out the groups that will be receiving money?
Nope, I have not. These are just organizations that I know that are in the community that are doing the work. It would go through an RFP process, they would, they would have to apply, they would show the work that they are doing and what they're trying to do.
Okay, because you keep referring to the groups, and it's, I've got the feeling that you've already picked out the allocations.
I'm not making a decision on who should begin, it's a, it's a committee process, and I'd be more happy to step off that committee so that they can, you all can feel confident that I'm not involved.
Okay, Commissioner Versari?
I just want to echo what Commissioner Tau is talking about with the organizations and committee, organizations and community workers that are the front lines of violence prevention. As an ambassador, when the ambassadors came to ask funding of the $100,000 at that time, I mean, you guys approved, that time, the foundations were going towards funding other programs other than youth programs. And the youth programs that are doing the work in the city were desperate to find other sources of funding, and the city was able to come up and help the community ambassadors. We are preaching and saying that community is first, policing. We're preaching and saying that we want to help the community come together and support an initiative that is owned by the community, and there are many organizations that exist in the city that are doing great and amazing... And there are many organizations that exist in the city that are doing great and amazing work. It could be a coach that's dealing with six kids and helping his six kids be actively off the streets and making sure that he's mentoring them and helping them. He would have access to this money, is what I'm guessing. And any organization that's doing great work, that is doing these things, that doesn't have the overhead of the ambassadors, or any other organizations that exist that has the backup, could apply for to give funding to continue the work that is really needed in this city, whether it be tutoring, whether it be basketball coaches, whether it be soccer coaches, to help our kids. I am in full support of this budget switch from the maintenance to one-time funding for community organizations and find on, later on, in different budgets to see if we can continue to help these organizations succeed and prosper. Thank you.
Commissioner Naker?
Thank you. I appreciate the conversation and I really appreciate the shared goals that we have around this table of doing whatever we can to address the tragic gun violence that we've been seeing in the city. I, a couple of people at this table have mentioned that there are many deserving nonprofit organizations doing great work in the city. And I just want to be clear that I don't at all question that. And coming from the nonprofit sector myself, I know firsthand how hard it is to find dollars for the work you want to do. So that is a given. What I have heard from my constituents in the wake of the gun violence we've been seeing is that they want us to take action in a way that will show results. They don't want us to throw money around. They don't want us to do what feels good. They want us to do what's going to work. And what I like about the public safety budget that we have in front of us is that it's backed by data. We have community ambassadors that show double-digit reductions in youth violence in the areas that they work in. Those are unbelievable results. And we have the Cure Violence Model, which we've seen show unbelievable results in other communities in the country. The programs where we are piloting something new, such as the Community Health Workers Program, we have a really good sense of what is going to actually happen as part of that program, who the contracts are going to go to. What I learned from our last budget last year, as Councilmember Tao mentioned, is that when we budget money to a program where we don't have that kind of specificity, it tends not to happen or not to be successful if it happens. And one of the things I took away from last year's budget process is I'm not going to allocate money again when I don't really understand what's going to happen in that program. And Councilmember Tao, when you and I have talked about this idea beforehand, I said, could there be sort of a one sheet or some sort of information that explains how this process is going to work, how the money is going to be allocated, what the qualifications are going to be, what the evaluation is going to be, how we're going to know it's successful? And I haven't seen that. We've been spending months and months grilling all of our city departments to really understand, and I respect all the people around this table who do this work so hard, exactly what's going to happen in their budgets. And we've been delving into every last detail of what they've been proposing to us and being really critical and asking good questions and cutting where we've seen the need to cut. And so I think all of our programs need to stand up to the same scrutiny. So I don't feel like I have the information at this time about what this program will be to feel confident that $200,000 is going to be used well. And frankly, I just don't think we have the room in this budget to have any dollars allocated to something that isn't going to show results.
Commissioner Prince?
Yeah, I have to take issue with a number of things that have been said. But one is, I want to be really clear that what I am supporting in terms of Councilmember Tao's proposal is not a COP-style program. It would be a future use of COP funds. So I'm not suggesting anything where the money gets doled out and decisions are made in a haphazard fashion. I also am surprised that people are talking about the groups involved in Roots and Restore as being sort of like, well, who are they and what are they really thinking about? Because it's my understanding that those are the very people who have been at the table all year at the meetings that you have held. And I, when I hear people say, well, we just don't know what they're going to do or how they're going to use it, I think what we as elected officials should be really humble about is that the people who are out in the community, who are doing the hard work of nonprofits, are the people who know, in many cases, much more than we do about what they need. And I received a call from a community leader in Ward Two today, who we all know and respect highly, who said that it would be her hope that these funds would be approved. It would be, as I understand it, if I've heard anything about the work of the community cabinet, it would be work of, the work of the community cabinet to determine how to pick these groups, what kind of criteria to set up, and what kind of program it should be. And to suggest that only we as the city, coming up with an idea like a community health worker program in the fire department, are in a position to say, we can confidently support that, when I sat in a meeting with the entire brass of the fire department and the two consultants who had been hired, and the best I got out of it in terms of how it's going to be spent is, well, we'll be helping people remember to take their medications. So please, don't suggest that, sitting in our offices, we know more about what our communities need to do than the people who are living there with gunshots and gun violence right in their neighborhoods. And we can't keep going out to the community and say, we're going to pull the whole community and we're going to talk about how we're going to end gun violence, and then not empower people who are on the ground to do the work that they know how to do to deal with the problem. And Councilmember Bussari brings up a really good example with the ambassadors, where it was one-time funding for people who had an idea and thought it would work. And then they went out and decreased crime by 62%. But they didn't know that when we gave them the $100,000. So I, I'm troubled by the way we talk about community people like they just won't know how to set criteria and they won't know how to judge success. Because I don't think we always do such a good job with that here at City Hall.
Commissioner Nelson?
The clarification I would make is that I think we need to work with our newly-formed People's Cabinet to create those criteria together. And I just, I feel like you've mischaracterized the way that at least I've tried to explain my idea. So I know what I said. I know that everyone who works with me knows what I'm about and what I've set out for and the ideas I believe in. I'm going to let that stand. But I don't appreciate you putting words in our mouths like that. I do respect that we have to have this conversation, so I'm willing to have it.
Commissioner Tao?
Thank you. So I'm going to speak from my heart, and I respect my colleague very much, utmost respect for them, because this work is never easy when you have to make hard decisions at a particular budget time. And so, you know, at the same time, I wanted to understand that the word "data-driven" or, you know, is used very loosely, if I've seen. We use it to support our position, and from both sides, all sizes. But when we talk about funding $750,000 for electric car charger, if you can bring up the map again of all the homicide in the city of St. Paul, you know, I'm not sure if folks that are dealing with homicide and gunfire, I don't know if they are within that income level would be useful for them, an electrical car charger. But I'm willing to support that because, you know what, I think that is something that we should consider for the future. We talk about needing data. This map shows the tragedy in our community and that today we have a chance, we have a voice to continue the work of the members of the community who is very deeply invested in this community. Majority of the city of St. Paul are going to become people of color. We need to help and ensure that this is a place where they can live and that we're providing organization to do the work to end gun violence, to end domestic violence in our community. And, you know, as the face of the city is changing, where people are getting displaced, there's not a lot of place for people of color to move to. And so part of living here is living in harmony, and I hope that my colleague would support this. And if, if we pass this amendment and we put this $200,000, and if, and if community organization the next year or so do not apply for this grant, I will come before this council and I'll apologize to you for this amendment. But I know that organizations need this help and I'm willing to put my reputation on the line so that they can get the help that they need. Thank you. With that, I move.
Okay, we have a motion for an amendment from Commissioner Tao. Roll call.
Commissioner Brad Mullen?
No.
Bussari?
Yes.
Jalali Nelson?
No.
Naker?
No.
Prince?
Yes.
Tao?
Yes.
Chair Tolbert?
No.
Four against, or three, four, and, that didn't sound right. There's four against and three for the amendment fails.
Anything else on the HRA budget?
A move approval.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
All right, roll call.
Commissioner Brad Mullen?
Yes.
Bussari?
No.
Jalali Nelson?
Yes.
Naker?
Yes.
Prince?
No.
Tao?
No.
Chair Tolbert?
Yes.
Four in favor, the resolution is adopted.
All right, next item?
Item number seven is a discussion item for the resolution approving and authorizing a license to flattery construction for temporary use of an HRA-owned parcel located at 845 and 851 Payne Avenue, District 5, Ward 6.
Director Gill?
Commissioners, this is, as our secretary said, a temporary license agreement for 845 to 851 Payne Avenue. This is a license to allow for temporary use for construction phasing for an HRA-owned parcel across the street located at 848 Payne, where there's an apartment building proposed. Redevelopment is the primary objective for this particular property at 845 Payne, and an RFP is planned for late 2020, when leasing has begun for the apartment building across the street. Flattery Construction will pay $500 a month for use of the parcel. This amount was determined by an appraiser, and they'll provide a $4,000 restoration deposit and indemnify the HRA. I will note that the resolution on this action has been changed. The original resolution that was entered into Legistar had very specific dates, and due to the construction timing across the street, those dates have changed a little bit. So we've just, we've modified the resolution to be a little bit more general about the start and end dates. The license will also have a short-term termination clause as well, so it can be terminated in writing with notice of 30 days.
All right. Any questions or comments? A motion from Commissioner Bussari. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Seven in favor and unopposed, the resolution is adopted. Item number eight is a discussion item for the resolution approving and authorizing the execution of legal services agreements with public finance law firms citywide.
Director Gill?
Commissioners, the CAO recently, and our procurement department recently issued a request for qualification for legal services for both the HRA and the city for bond counsel services. And after a competitive solicitation period, have identified two firms to provide legal services under a three-year agreement. Those two firms are Kennedy and Graven and Ballard Spar. The three-year agreement will have an optional two-year extension, and staff recommends approval.
Any questions or comments? If not, a motion by Commissioner Nelson. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Seven in favor and unopposed, the resolution is adopted. Item number nine is a discussion item authorizing execution of a lease amendment to the Block 19 ramp and lease between the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, HRA, of the city of St. Paul as lesser and William L. Hosko as tenant.
Commissioners, this is a proposal to extend a lease for tenant space at the Block 19 parking ramp. The Music Forest Cafe is the current tenant, and we're proposing to extend the lease for a period of five years with one option to extend further. Music Forest Cafe will pay $1,300 a month for this space.
Great. Any discussion? If not, a motion to approve by Commissioner Naker. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Seven in favor and unopposed, the resolution is adopted. Item number 10 is a discussion item for the resolution authorizing, approving guidelines and funding for the 2020 4D Affordable Housing Incentive Program.
Commissioner Gill?
Commissioners, last year, we launched the 4D program as a key NOAA strategy, naturally-occurring affordable housing. And we experienced great success. We did this fairly, with fairly short notice and had a lot of applications for the program. You'll recall that this is, this is a property tax discount for property owners who are willing to maintain income-qualified affordable levels for their apartments. And those apartments are then deed restricted to ensure that those affordability levels are maintained. We had a number of applications for just under 700 units, ended up certifying 415 units last year. We're proposing to repeat that good experience and make a few modifications to the guidelines this year that we've learned from our experience last year. So the two key modifications that we're proposing are to begin to allow single-family rentals to participate. And those single-family rentals can be released from the deed restriction if they are sold to a new owner who's 80% AMI. So we don't want the program to be a restriction for increasing homeownership in areas, and that's how we're building in a safety there. And then the other, the other change that we're recommending is to provide a bit of an incentive to 50% AMI units. So last year, we had just verbally said, or in the guidelines, we said that we would prefer to see some 50% AMI, and we did get some good outcomes from that. 44% of the total units were at 50% AMI and the rest were at 60% AMI. This year, we're proposing to provide a large, a little bit larger grant to the property, so $100 per unit if it's a 50% AMI, $75 per unit for the 60% AMI. And we're recommending to establish an explicit target for the percentage of 50% AMI. Staff recommends approval.
Any discussion? Commissioner Prince?
I do want to thank staff for considering the single-family option. I have, I had a landlord call me and he owns several single-family homes and he rents them very affordably and for large families, that's a real opportunity, given that there are so few three-bedroom units. So the ability of staff to take that on and make that change is real, I'm really grateful for that. I think it could bear fruit over on the east side at least.
Great. I also want to take the opportunity to thank Director Gill, Kayla Shuckman, and her entire team. This 4D program is one of the things out of our Fair Housing Report, the production, preservation, and protections. This is one of the ones that I've been most excited about and thought we could get really good results. Over 400 units that were preserved as affordable housing in the city of St. Paul, that's fantastic in our first year. And I know I've had landlord, more landlords who have naturally occurring affordable housing reach out, and I think as this word gets out there, more and more are going to be interested in this, and it's fantastic news for the city of St. Paul. I also am thinking, we've had, I think we've had housing, affordable housing programs or guidelines on our agenda for the last probably six months, every single HRA meeting, which shows both the amount of energy and time and programs that we're putting together, but also the creativity of the housing staff. And grateful for that. That has been the HRA's top priority, is affordable housing. And staff has really been helping us succeed in making a difference in that area. So thank you to Kayla Shuckman, Director Gill, and the entire team that's been working on this. Commissioner Naker?
Thank you. Yeah, just to pile on, Ms. Shuckman and Councilmember Nelson and I sit on the Family Housing Fund Board, and there's always a time at the end when you can share partner updates. And I started to share, you know, a partner update about some of the work that we've been doing in housing, and I think it was maybe the rental rehab program, maybe it was 4D. And then I kept thinking of things to talk about. And so my report ended up going on for like 10 minutes at the end of this meeting, and it's supposed to take about 30 seconds. And the rest of the table was just very blown away and grateful for what we're doing in St. Paul, leading the way on a lot of these housing initiatives. And they do, it's great to see you pass a resolution with sort of everything in it, and then to see these programs rolling out is really gratifying. So kudos to the team.
Yeah. And I'll just add, since I forgot to say it, and at the end of the day, the most important thing is there's families and people whose lives are being changed because of this. So the people that are getting the benefits of this and having their lives be better, particularly the kids that will benefit, is fantastic. So thank you. A motion to approve this by Commissioner Nelson, all those in favor? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Seven in favor and unopposed, the resolution is adopted.
And that brings the HRA to close. A motion to adjourn by Commissioner Prince. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We're done.